All right, let's say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, welcome everyone, and Dan especially thank you for covering for me the last two meetings. Chad, would you be willing to be an acting secretary in Heather's absence? All right, and so would you do attendance, please?
President Donald.
Here.
Vice President Delcendo.
Here.
Secretary Shaker. Secretary Bailey. Trustee Griffiths here. Trustee Foster.
Here.
And Trustee Henser.
Running in a few minutes.
Running in a few minutes. Any changes to the board agenda?
None.
You have a consent agenda before you, minutes of June 25th, higher recommendation. Someone like to read that motion? Chad?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Eric, support? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any pre-arranged requests to address the board?
No.
All right, under Board of Education matters, we have bank depository. Time of the year when the bank depository signature policies must be approved, so we have a few motions to do that. Who would like to start with the first motion? Dan? Okay, let's go around, okay, Chad?
Move the Oxford Bank, JP Morgan Chase, BMO Harris Bank, NA, Flagstar Bank, Comerica, Fifth Third Bank, Huntington Bank, BNY Mellon, and Bank of America being made as depositories of school funds for the 2019-2020 school year.
Is there support? Support, Dan? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dan?
Move to authorize Sam Barna to transfer funds between depository accounts and transact wire transfers for investment purposes for the 2019-2020 school year with the approval of Tim Throne.
Is there support? Eric, support? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mary, welcome.
Thank you.
We're on 5B. Would someone like to make that motion? Eric?
Move that Oxford Community Schools Board of Education continue membership in the Michigan Association of School Boards for the 2019-2020 school year at a cost of $8,144 based on student enrollment as presented.
Is there support? Chad, support? Discussion? Yes?
Just so everybody knows, this money goes to MASB as our membership, and we use that for what, Tim? Just for...
So you guys can go to meetings, get classes, we can come and get support.
Okay. Just want to make sure that everybody's clear while we're approving that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Legal counsel? Mary, would you like to read that motion?
Move to appoint Throome, is that correct?
Yep.
Throome Law Firm PC, Butz along, Jeff Butler, Dickinson Wright, Lusk Albertson, Clark Hill, and Saunders, Winters, McNeil, and Collins and Waha as legal counsel for Oxford Community Schools for 2019-2020.
Support? Chad, support? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Designated newspaper, motion. Chad?
Move to designate the Oxford Leader or the Oakland Press for publication of legal notices for the Board of Education for the 2019-2020 school year.
Support? Mary, support? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Appoint board representative on property matters. Someone like to make that motion? Dan?
Move to appoint Tim Throne and Sam Barna to represent the Board of Education in all property matters, and also authorize them to sign board-approved purchase, sale, and lease agreements on the Board's behalf for the 2019-2020 school year.
Support? Mary, support? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. MHSAA membership resolution, Eric?
Move to approve the MHSAA membership resolution for the year August 1st, 2019 through July 31st, 2020.
Support? Chad, support? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. K-9 update?
So, we had looked at purchasing a dog with district funds and having a dog assigned to one by our security personnel. Just want to bring the board up to speed, long story short, we found out that there was liability issues and that the district would be taking on liability if we owned the dog versus if we continue to bring in canine units through the sheriff's office. In light of that, we also asked the sheriff's office to give us an hourly rate that would allow us to bring in various types of dogs, and so I meet with them this coming Thursday, and we're actually looking to draw up a mini-contract, they call it, through the township, because the township actually brings in the services of the sheriff's department. Yeah, looking to draw up a contract for this coming year, and we'll use those canine services through the sheriff's office instead of ourselves. It's just sort of where we're at, and unless anything majorly changes, I will be bringing that contract to the board at our next meeting for approval. Already put that in our 2019-2020 budget, and so we've got money there for those purposes. So that's where we're at.
Just a quick question, so the dog will still be in the district the same amount of time as we had planned? It's just owned by somebody else?
Yeah, so we're gonna basically just contract for, I think I asked them to draw it up for like roughly 360 hours, and so it still gives us total control of, do we want a dog in the morning? Do we want a dog at night for night activity? We could send a canine unit to elementary schools, middle school, high school, doesn't really matter. It'll be under our full control.
Very good. Yes?
Two questions. What did you base that 360 hours on? Just the school day of the year?
Yep. Number of school days. The hourly rate, I want to say, is close to like $70 per hour, and so if you do the math, it's gonna come out real close to around $25,000, and that's pretty close to what we had budgeted. And so, yeah, we feel this is a good way to also just, I don't want to say test the waters, but it allows us to have canine services without going all the way and purchasing the dog ourselves, without knowing anything. I'll say it that way.
The other person, as you mentioned, different types of dogs.
Yep.
Be able to have access to different types of dogs. Are you, or different types of dogs, meaning they're synthetic for different things?
Yep.
Okay.
Exactly.
Yep. Good, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Under curriculum and instruction, we have a recommendation for Chromebooks. Motion, Dan?
Move to approve the purchase of 200 Chromebooks in the amount of $60,900 and 150 laptops in the amount of $97,275 from in-account TSG for OVA.
Support? Chad, support? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Barna?
Good evening. What I have in front of me is actually a bid summary, a bid tabulation for one of our projects, which was the safety grant funding. That is 70% Michigan State Police Grant funded, as 30 and 25%, I should say, funded by the general fund this year. This is one of the projects that constitutes, again, the 440, roughly $2,000 the district received this year for the safety grant. This is the security window film that we posted on the state website, and we did get one bid back, as you can see. And it was obviously from the contractor, Michigan Glass Coatings, who's represented here tonight. Thank you again for coming. And so we wanted to present this to you and let you know that, again, we did bid this out. We did only receive, again, the one bidder, and they did abide by all of the bidding requirements that they then we asked for, and so I want to open it up for discussion if anyone has anything to ask.
Any discussion?
Just that, I don't know how easy this is to answer, but any idea what it costs per window? I see the number here, but I have no idea how many panes we have.
Sure. We did that number because I think the state grant wanted that idea per unit. But yeah, it really, it really varies. I know that some of the elementarys, you have a real common window where there's a doorway and there's a six-inch by 18-inch window, and maybe six of those in that door. You know, that constitutes a unit. That was gonna be very inexpensive, you know, where other ones are, you know, hallway. For, in fact, I think over at, at OES, they have some really big ones by the cafeteria.
High school, high school main gateway there.
Yes.
And they're in the lobby in the front glass in the office area.
So when you look at the per, you know what's kind of hard? There is a, again, there's also a general square foot one, which is sort of a whole project number two.
Is there a square foot price that we, because I...
I think for this project, it came up near 20.
It was, it was 19 and some change, and that was one of the, you know, one of the items, that unit price on there.
And that's not...
Per square foot, so that's right about where we're at. Just, just under $20 square foot.
And that's factoring in the attachment system. So not only does the film go on the glass, which that's the common thing people are familiar with. You, you know, you go up to tempered glass, you poke it, it shatters into a million pieces and you walk right through. So now the film holds that together very tightly. But you give it a shoulder, you push a nice contained piece in now. So what we do is go around the perimeter with an adhesive that now holds it together. So essentially, you've made like a drumhead, where now it's broken glass, held in by the film, held in by the conch system, where you can repeatedly push on that, and it's not gonna fall in. Now they will get in, there's videos, if you, you know, if you want to watch them sometime, of them demonstrating it, taking several minutes, you know, to push this piece in. But the main thing is that you have so much tempered glass for safety. And if you've ever seen a break in a car window or a door wall, sliding glass door, it just makes the prumps. So it's, makes it extremely easy to get in. You can just, something on your shoe, it'll kick the bottom corner, it'll drop it right in. So this is basically sold as a deterrent. Now you think you broke the glass and it didn't go anywhere. So then you give it a hit, and it still ain't going anywhere. And most likely, we're hoping people say, okay, this isn't what I want. This isn't what I was thinking was gonna happen. They choose another location.
What this does is it buys you time.
Yeah.
And that's obviously, it's a layer of security.
And this particular film that we got, it has the tinning in it too. So it's, it's not the clear, it's got the mirror finish, which is a little higher-end film.
So I guess my question that, number one, is... Somebody will know which windows are filmed and which windows are not. Correct. Just by simply looking at them.
Correct.
So if they're looking for a point of entry, let's go beyond just trying to break into a school to steal something. You're looking for a point of entry. Do we have all windows covered that somebody could reasonably get into?
No, so this is not an all-inclusive approach across the district. In other words, there is so much glazing within the district, not just our district, any district. It would be just cost prohibitive. And again, the grant was for several projects that are finite in mind. So this is only covering, you know, probably a small portion.
Everything that looks like a main entrance or an entrance entryway, Tony marked off for all the schools.
Not on the main entryways. It's not all of them secondary entryways, but the main ones that are in there.
I guess my only thought is maybe to make it so that people don't know which one it is, just go with a clear coat instead of a tint. Just a thought.
Well, a lot of this, like at OVA, because it's that storefront through there, I wanted that reflective qualities, because it's, even with the shades, I don't want them to be able to see into that. Now, at the high school, I could get a credit back for some of that and, and go with the clear stuff, maybe on the high school or something like that, the main entryways there. You know, we could discuss that, but a lot of the smaller projects that, like that, I don't even think they would notice it. Other than that, they would have this, you know, little, you wouldn't be able to see through the glass. And a lot of glasses are different, so I don't think it jumps out that much at, at us. Now, Dave did one of the windows up at the middle school. We did that going into the main office, he put that, that mirror-faced glazing on there, that coating on there, and it looks real good. I wouldn't even know it unless I knew it, that that had that, you know, protective ballistic film on there, or that security film on there.
Yeah, they, a lot of the secretaries will, will say, and a lot, a lot of people found, to have that where they don't see it clearly, you know, gives them a lot of sense of security. You know, they're not looking right at you, they don't know where you're at. And keep people guessing on what's on the other side of the door. That's the idea behind it.
It's almost like a one-way mirror almost, then too. You'll be able to see people on the outside. And the nice part about this is, even though it's on the inside, it's not gonna, you know, we can still put some kind of decals and stuff like that on the outside windows if we want to do that, like some of the stuff that Matt could do.
Eric, two questions. Is this building one of the ones that you're doing? Do you have windows in the front and windows in back?
We did not do this building.
Okay.
We're all students. There's so much, you could...
We didn't do Tony's office either.
Yeah. What type of warranty can we expect? So, you know, in my head, I can see 10 years down the line, this, even though you've got the adhesive on there, still, you know, your elements and things are gonna play a factor in staying on to the windows and stuff. So what does that look like?
In commercial setting, they give you five years on the film.
Okay.
And inside application, it's probably, you know, gonna last much longer than that. They say 3M now give the go-ahead to clean with whatever the people use. I mean, they even okayed ammonia, which was a big no-no for a long time. So any cleaning solution, just stay away from erasers, is all they say.
Okay. So you may just want to make sure people who clean our windows are aware?
Yeah.
If we get our windows cleaned.
All the synthetic, yeah, all the synthetic fiber, you know, fiber rays and stuff they use today are all...
In the bid package, we called out for five-year warranty. That's pretty standard.
All right. Mary?
I know at the high school, sometimes we like to decorate those windows in the front, and then like to paint them. And we also have kids who love to hang out there in the mornings and in the afternoons, and all you need is, they'll take their pens and they'll take their everything else and try to scratch that stuff right off. Is it, I'm just curious how strong it is from that perspective, from people messing with it, trying to peel it off, because you give the kids something to play with it.
Yeah, they do, well, I don't, they're not gonna peel it. I know that. But yeah, it has a 3M, we call it a hard coat. It's their toughest, you know, scratch guard coating that they put on the last layer. It's a good question, but I mean, I'm gonna try it.
Because I know, because kids will, they just, they do.
We also put it on door walls where you have pets.
The pets.
Right, right.
And we don't have a lot of complaints about having to come out when we do that.
Would we be able to paint on it with whatever window paint kind of stuff that we use decorating? Maybe we have to do something different, and that's okay, I'm just curious.
See, that's coming back to get me, I started that. When they first asked, I said, you better clean it.
Right.
Yeah, that's a, I mean, the poster bait, I can't imagine that.
Do they put that on the outside or the inside?
Inside.
When we painted on, we always did it on the inside.
Well, now they wouldn't, because you wouldn't necessarily see it on the outside.
Right, you wouldn't see it. Yeah, and with Matt, talking with Matt about the...
I know they can't get on the outside, the rain's gonna take it down. That's gonna be very interesting. Maybe they just find a new place, a new tradition.
I know Matt talked too about the perforated film that you put on it, you put your wildcat on there, and then you put it on the outside, and you can, you know, you can still see out. Like all the fast foods have them up, the Taco Bell's and what, you can, if you're inside looking out, you see out of it, but when you're outside, you see the, yeah. So yeah, with that stuff put up, it's, yeah, it might not be the best spot to put that anymore, but... Another way we did it, you know, we, painting it gets so labor-intensive, and when we started doing it with MyClub, we cut the pieces of paper on the white paper and painted them, and then we just stuck them on the frame. And we ended up saving for the next year, save some time.
I'm sure the custodial staff...
They'll be really happy. Yeah.
So how does it apply? I'm just curious.
So 3M uses, there's a couple different varieties. 3M uses a pressure-sensitive adhesive on the back. So they'll put water down, called a slip solution, it's got a little bit of soap in there. And your goal is pretty much, you're removing all that before you're done. You're gonna push it out, and all that lets you do is keep from getting the bubble, you know, wrinkle in there. And then after that, it's a 3M adhesive from the film, the glass, put on with the pressure. 30, 60 days, they say, water should be dried out of it, and that's, then you're, you're permanent.
Okay.
Actually, you're not permanent, because that's one of the big things about 3M, is they want you to be able to replace it fairly easily as well. But to most people, they even think it's permanent.
Sure.
It's gonna be stuck pretty good.
Sam, do we have a certain amount of time we need to do this within?
We do. For all the projects that were approved within the safety grant, we have until June 1st of next year. So 20 to spend the funds.
Okay.
And again, just as a reminder, this is a reimbursement type of grant, so if approved, again, for any projects, including this one, we spend the money as a district, and then we get reimbursed 75% of the budget cost by the grant.
Because I'm just thinking, to do anything soon, all the buildings are, with everything being under construction, we'd be starting anytime soon.
Correct.
Assuming you want the dust all settled before you start putting things in the windows.
Absolutely, yeah. We just wanted to, again, this is one of the series of projects for the safety grant, so this was the first we come for.
Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you. Human resources?
First, just want to thank the board for approving our recommendation for Anne Raab as our new director of early childhood. She began last Monday, the 1st, and I'm sure she's been drinking from a fire hose ever since. Comes to us from LaPire, very highly recommended, and survived a rigorous process through three rounds of interviews, and we're very excited to have Anne on board. And I plan on bringing you all of our certified staff recommendations, probably second meeting in June. And so rather than bringing those to you, you know, one or two at a time, as we've been hiring over the last month and a half, decided this year that we'll bring them to you in bulk. And so we'll bring those recommendations in August, once we've got, hopefully, all of the hiring complete. But we're, we're in pretty good shape, we're down to probably about three different positions that we need to fill between now and the start of the year, but we've been doing a significant amount of hiring over the last month and a half, hiring some really good, really good folks, so we're excited.
Good to hear. Thank you. Student services?
There is a motion for the Oakland School Advisory Committee.
Would someone like to make that motion? Dan?
Move to approve Andrea Perry to the Oakland School's parent advisory committee.
Is there support? Mary, support? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
On Heather's behalf, would someone like to read the second reading of the policies? Yes, please, all the way through to the, oh, it is, does the motion go? Yep.
Move to approve the second reading of policies. 2210, curriculum development. 2510, adoption of textbooks. 7540, technology. 7540.03, student technology, acceptable use and safety. 7540.04, staff technology, acceptable use and safety. 7544, use of social media.
Thank you, Chad. Support? Dan, support? Discussion? Yes?
I just had a couple questions, comments. I did notice that we're talking about these technology policies again. I think everybody's working overtime as technology changes, that they have to keep changing these policies. On the first one, the career level development, we were adding the provision that is now, that we need to put in to comply with the current law, provide grade-appropriate instruction on career development in each grade level from kindergarten through 12. I know we talked about this in CTE advisory, and assuming that this is part of that. What Lisa Butz was talking about, that the state was mandating that we now talk about career development all the way from kindergarten. So that would be interesting, how we're able to do that. I think it offers a lot of room for creativity, you know, on our, innovation, as they say later in the, as we're saying later in the policy. I love that, innovative program. And it's been in practice, so I just wanted to make sure that that was a part of the same. That was part of the same thing. Another question on, we'll go to the end. I did notice that in a number of these technology policies, and there's three or four here together, I'm sure that Neil is just trying to catch up with all the changes, but I did notice some inconsistencies in wording. So I just kind of want to keep our eyes open as these policy changes come through, where it's referred to district technology, and to Chad's point, a couple weeks ago, a few weeks ago, we talked about how some of the wording was awkward, so I know they started to change some. Why, I can't find it right now, because I'm talking. What the wording is, we're talking about things like educational use or instructional purposes. In some places, it's written as district technology resources, some places it's written as technology and information resources. So I'm assuming that's all the same thing, just want to stay aware as more changes come through that all of these things are saying it the same way, so that we have some consistency, and we're sure that we are talking about the same thing all the way through. Which is something that I noticed as I was looking at that. So I'm glad to see that we're on top of that, because boy, does that really change quickly. So I appreciate all the work on that. That's it.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Well, there is no one here for unscheduled audience participation.
Tony's chomping at the bit.
I just had my piece.
You've got a scheduled activities, I take you through the end of August. Any clarification?
None.
Final board comments, Chad?
Great to be a Wildcat.
We already were. I, I think it happened around Sam. Don't.
Happened around Sam. Okay, so, no Ken, no Sam, we might be able to do it.
Now, what has to happen?
It's all about leadership, it's almost.
You can have the position back.
All right, Dan? No. Mary?
Geez, I'm excited that we're continuing to move forward with these safety measures. We are on top of using that, you know, using that grant funding. If all the schools look really busy, and the crane's moving around over there at the high school, and we got word on the mechatronics room, it can't be there during the day, can't be there when the crane is there, so we're all set and looking everything now, next grade, and glad that we're keeping everybody safe in there. Good to see things building and growing, and on new laptops for OVA means we got more students coming into OVA, and great, I peruse through the job frames every once in a while, and I've seen that we've had some openings coming through, so I'm really glad to see that it's working out well. um, it's working out while we're getting some good candidates and getting those filled and grateful, Mr. Pass. Um, and it is a great day to be a wildcat.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Eric?
Nothing for me.
Sir Dan?
Great to be a wildcat. I just wanted to say, um, great hire with Ann Robb. Not just her, but great family, great Oxford people. And from what I've heard about her from a couple of people that I know in LaPire, very, very dedicated and passionate to her kids there. So, um, great hire.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
Well, for you guys, there is no such thing as summer vacation. Um, and for you, wow, it is so neat to drive by the buildings and see hoppers by every doorway and like, like cars parked, you know, it's not faculty, all these people, workers are in there. So, great job, Tony, and, and, uh, right now the weather's behaving for you, so that's great too.
A lot of work's going on.
Yeah. So great job, everybody. Um, wonderful, wonderful. Sir?
Uh, just the only other thing I want to add is that, um, a follow-up to our last board meeting. We are offering employees in central office starting next week uh, the ability to work for 10-hour days, uh, during the summer, at least for the next four weeks. So, just to follow, just FYI to let you know, Mary.
And then go Friday.
Correct. In some cases, uh, you may not have a Monday, but work Tuesday through Friday, Friday, so that we make sure that we cover all of the departments.
Could Ken and Sam have the next meeting where we have tea thing? Oh my goodness. Any others? We're good? That was it?
That's it.
All right. It's a great day to be a wildcat. Meeting adjourned.